Good morning. My name is John Barn. I'm the managing editor of today's Sunbeam. And on behalf of Sunbeam publisher Walter Hold and Media News Group Chairman Richard Scudder, I'm honored to welcome you to today's town meeting. And without further delay, I'd like to introduce the chairman of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, Mr. Jack Lake, who will introduce our guest today. Thank you.
And thank you for being here and welcome. To the best of my knowledge, it's the first time a governor has held a town meeting in Salem County. And I am just extremely proud, as I know you are, to have the governor of this great state of New Jersey with us here today. And without further ado, let me present to you the Honorable Christine Todd Whitman, Governor of New Jersey.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I want to start by thanking you all for taking time out of your day to come here, to be here, to share this with me. As you know, during the campaign, I made some promises and some statements about the need to work with people, to bring people into the process, to hear from you. And right after the election, we established the Our Tax Dollar Program, encouraging people to write and save, send in savings, suggestions. Because you all are the ones who are the recipient of government services. We serve you. You're our customer. And in order to make government more efficient, in order to deliver services better, we need to keep an open dialogue, to know what's happening, what you see as being needs in the state, and where you see things that can be done better. And I'm really pleased to say that in that first budget, we were able to identify $20 million in savings that we proposed that came directly from people writing in, saying, "I, you know, don't have any special expertise, but I think, why wouldn't you consider this?" Or, "I've watched this go on, and I think you can do it better." Those kinds of things are real. Everyone has a role to play in government, in your local government, in your county government, in your state government. And I am just delighted with the way people have responded to it. And I intend to keep that up. We have done it with radio call-in shows, with television call-in shows, and with these town meetings. And I'm really pleased that you are so willing to take of your time to be here today. And I look forward to, I'll answer any questions that I can. I want to also hear your input and suggestions and concerns and ideas, because I know you have a lot to offer. Let me just say, as we start, as you know, we've proposed, and in the inaugural address, I asked for that 5% retroactive income tax cut, which was passed with, in just a few short days, really 50, excuse me, 56 days of the inauguration, which is pretty good. And I've asked for further income tax cuts in the second, in the budget message that I gave to the state in March. And with the help of the leadership of both houses, I look forward to that becoming a reality. And to start to get government to be more responsive to the public in general. I wish we could have waved a magic wand and done it all, right off the bat. Unfortunately, we can't. We can't do all, rectify all wrongs that we see, make everything better, everything work smoothly, within the first six months. But we're working. And we're working hard to try to do that. And again, it's an evolving process. It's a continuing process. The need for public input is never going to end. And I look forward to continuing this kind of a dialogue. And all I can say to you before we start, and I open it up to your questions and concerns, is, don't let it end today. If you have something that isn't touched on, if you have a question, a concern, if you don't think, you don't like where we're going with policy, I mean, there's no question. But this administration responds to you. And we need to hear what you're talking about. I need to be able to explain to you why we're doing some of the things we're doing, and hope that you agree with the tack that we're taking. But if we, and I know, we're going to leave here in an hour and not have covered everything, so don't hesitate to write to me in Trenton, because it does work. Those letters are reviewed. I do hear, see them. I do hear what people are saying, and we do try to respond. And we make sure everybody gets a response to the letter. We can't always respond and do what you want us to do in your request, but we try our best. So with that, I would like to open it up to anyone who has a question or concern, and we'll try to hit everybody that we can. We have a moderator. Want me to take this?
Okay. Well, let's start with the gentleman.
Governor Whitman, Steve, President of the Department of Homeland Security, National Security, American Legion. For over 100 years, this state of New Jersey has been dedicated to a fraught tradition of care and commitment to the veterans. The need is now increasing for long-term care. The veterans' population is skewed toward the older age group, and there is a marked increase in the chronic disease, which requires long nursing home care. At the violent soldiers' home now, we have a population of 257 in home, a waiting list of 72, and open beds are 26. We need $600,000 to open these 23 beds, which can be gotten from the VA, the casinos, and from the maintenance fee of the patients. Then why have you approved a decrease in the number of available long-time care beds for veterans of Southern and Central New Jersey? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. One of the things that we have done in the budget was to reach out to all the departments and agencies and ask them for their areas where they believe we can do a better job of meeting needs and can be more cost-effective. And the commissioner, well, Paul Glaser, who is the commander in chief, has made the list of recommendations. He's based it on need and usage. And we are still working through on the budget, and you've got to understand this. One of the things you do when you put a budget out, you put out the budget, and then you go through a negotiation process. And quite clearly, there are areas in this budget where we need to make adjustments, no question about it. We need to make some changes. We need to fine-tune it, and that's what we're in the process of doing. And we have talked to him, and Paul is very concerned and sensitive about the need for taking care of our veterans, both nursing home beds and also the problem of the homeless veteran. That's another real concern that we have in this state. And those are two areas that are of particular concern with the veteran population. He is, and I have to rely on him for his recommendations in this area, because he is the expert in that. And we are going to try to make sure that we meet all the needs in the most efficient way possible, and get people to the kind of help and care that they need. So we're still in the process of negotiating that with a budget, and I'm sure that you have been in touch with Paul. He has been in touch with the treasurer. And what we're going to do, and it gives me an opportunity to say something which I think is important. In the past, what's happened with budgets is, you see, everybody has, every line item has a constituency group. Everybody who represents anybody has a particular program that's a need, and they're all real. Believe me, I would have loved nothing better than have been able to present a budget that fully funded every program that there ever was. Could not do that, because if I continued spending money the way money had been spent and government had grown over the last 25 years, it's not just Democrats, it's Republicans, Democrats, it's just happened with government. I would leave office were I to be re-elected for a second term. After eight years, I'd leave this state with a $32 billion budget. That would mean that we would have to raise taxes $3 billion every 30 months. We can't sustain that. But one of the things we're doing, and as we address the kind of problem that you talked about, is we're asking both houses of the legislature, where the treasurer is getting, bringing together all the requests, all the concerns that have been raised about the budget, all the requests for more money. And we're going to sit down and look at them as a total package. Because if we start now saying, "Okay, we'll put the money back for this," or, "Yes, we really like this program, we'll put that money back," we're going to end up, the end of the day, totaling it up and find that we're right back to where we were before, which is increasing spending. We only are going to have $15.37 billion in revenues next year. We have to learn to live within that. And that's the concern I have, and that's why I can't say, "We're going to definitely put those beds back now." That's going to be part of the total picture, as we look at the needs throughout the state and try to make the balances, which are not easy, but to try to make those balances.
Governor Whitman, welcome to Salem County.
Thank you.
As an ordinary working man here in Salem County, my car insurance is too high. Do you see any reform coming up in the future?
Yes. First of all, there are a couple of things with car insurance that you should know. One of the first things, and it is the major issue facing the new commissioner of insurance, Drew Korpinski. The first thing we have to do is deal with the deficit that the MTF has driven up. And we are, we had to do something that I found to be quite onerous, but it was necessary, which was freeze payments on the MTF deficit, for those payouts for people who are rightly and justly entitled to them, because there just wasn't enough money to pay it out. We are now working on a solution that I think that we're going to have in the next couple of weeks. It's going to allow us to deal with that deficit and move forward beyond the MTF. But that doesn't get to the issue that you're talking about, which is overall car insurance payments. The commissioner is directing all his attention, once he gets past the MTF deficit problem, toward that issue, because that is the critical issue. We are never, I have to be brutally honest, we are never going to have the lowest auto insurance rates in the nation. It's just not going to happen. We're the most densely populated state in the nation. We're a corridor state. That just isn't going to happen. But we don't have to have the second highest in the nation. And what we're looking at is basic minimum premium and policies that start to recognize that people don't all drive cars worth $1,000, much less $1,000 in premiums. That is going to involve some tort reform. It's a very involved issue. We have to reexamine what we mean by no fault. We've never had true no-fault in this state. We have to reexamine what we are going to allow in the way of tort reform, and what we are going to allow in the way of suits for pain and suffering. Those are all parts of legislation that are currently in the hopper. The commissioner has just written me a memo, and I was just reading it yesterday, that has several other suggestions directed toward addressing that long-term problem of how do we start to give the consumer more options to allow you the flexibility to be able to buy less expensive premiums that give you the coverage that you need. I mean, the coverage that different people need, depending on your car, where you live, how you drive, how often you drive, you may feel you need a different level of coverage. And we need to give you that flexibility. One of the things we've seen with what happened in previous administrations in dealing with this issue is, we basically have driven car insurers out of the market. And we have insurance companies here that will pay people to take away their auto insurance business, because it is so bad to do that business here in New Jersey. The only person that loses, when you lose competition, is the premium payer, is the consumer. And so we're looking at how we can try to encourage more competition in the auto insurance market, and at the same time, drive down the cost of basic premiums, to allow people the option and a range of options from which to choose. So that's very much on his agenda, and it's something with which he's very concerned.
Quite a few of my teachers are curious to know what you seem to accomplish by cutting their pensions.
Okay, I'm glad you asked that question, because we're not cutting pensions. Unfortunately, there's been an awful lot of misinformation that's been put out, and I have been very concerned about that, because it is deliberate to the degree that I believe we have communicated very well what's happening. We're not touching a penny of the $36 billion that currently is in the pension system. We're not taking a penny out of that. We had a set of criteria when we looked at doing the budget and looked at pensions, one of which was that we wouldn't touch a penny of the existing pension, and we're not. Were every state employee to retire tomorrow, we'd be able to cover their pensions and health benefits. The changes we are making are changes in the payment schedule. Instead of prepaying, the state has been prepaying into the healthcare, and that's the only area where we're changing it. It has to do with healthcare. It's not overall pensions, it's healthcare. We are not prepaying. We are going to go on a pay-as-you-go basis. We'll leave the money that's there now and continue to pay on a pay-as-you-go basis. By doing that, we will save the taxpayers of the state of New Jersey by 1998 $1 billion. That's how much extra we'd be paying into the system. And it doesn't jeopardize, it doesn't change the nature of the healthcare coverage, it doesn't change the nature of the pension system, and it doesn't take any money out of it. So there's a lot of misinformation that's been put out. This is something, another test that we had in order to go forward with any of this, is that I wanted to know that the actuaries who have been managing the state employee and the NJA pension plans thought it was good policy. They have agreed to this. They believe this is good, sound policy. We have been basing the payment schedule on a presumption that we were going to see increasing payments at, the level of increase was going to be 10% a year. We haven't seen anything like that. It's been much less. So what we're doing is saying, "Let's look at what's actually happening. How do we ensure that we don't take a penny out of anybody's pension, and we don't hurt the system?" And we start to bring it back into balance. Now, there is another issue, where they have, where there is a concern, and this is a different issue, and that is a 2% change in the pension system. That is a change. What that is, is back in 1955, there was a differentiation between what the federal government allowed in Social Security and what the state government paid toward the pension, and essentially, our state workers, and this only applies to teachers and CWA members. Firemen, police are not covered by this. They never got this 2%. Basically, those employees were being hit by 2%. And so the state said, "That's not fair. We're going to increase the state's contribution to the pension system by 2% to do away with the inequity." In 1966, the laws changed, so that inequity went away. But the state, as was what happens with government programs, just, you know, once they're there, you keep paying it. We kept paying 2% extra. So essentially, the state has been paying an extra 2% to those workers, the CWA and the NJA members, beyond which, that which is paid for. Nobody in the private sector gets this. Police, firemen don't get it. Executive branch, we're not covered by CWA. We don't get it. We never got it. It costs us $100 million a year. It's just not right. It's an equity matter. We should not continue to pay that extra 2%. It was the need for, it was done away with in 1966. We're not going back to 1966 and saying, "You really should pay it back in." We're just saying, "We're not going to do it anymore in the future." We can't afford to do it. The taxpayer can't afford to do it, and it's an equity issue. So that will go away. But we have funded, for the CWA workers, we have fully funded their negotiated 6% salary increase. So they will be getting an increase next year. It's going to be 4%, not 6%. And the teachers, many of them, have a negotiated increase that will kick in July 1. Again, that increase will go forward, but it will be 2% less, because we are stopping this subsidy. But that's an equity issue. And that's different, that's separate from the pension. It was not a negotiated thing. It was something that occurred before they were negotiating contracts. So we're not taking anything out of their pensions, and we're just trying to bring things back into balance and really relieve taxpayers, and they're taxpayers too, relieve them of that burden. And just the last thing on that, this isn't about us against them. Teachers aren't the enemy. I mean, teachers are the ones who are going to provide us with our future. Teachers are required to do so much more today than they ever were in the past. I mean, they're no longer dispensers of academic information. They are social workers, and psychologists, and family counselors, and we need to recognize that and support it. So we're not trying to balance a budget on the back of the teachers, nor on the back of the civil servants. What we're saying is, we've got to have some equity, and we've got to understand the limits of state government and its ability to pay.
Yeah, Vic Marge Insurance Broker. I'd like to commend you on nominating Drew Korpinski as the new insurance commissioner. I think first time ever, insurance broker was, has become insurance commissioner. Now, under the Fair Act, there was a law that says, "Take all comers." So anybody comes to our doors, we have to insure them. We've been doing that. However, a lot of companies have canceled these brokers, because they're obeying the law. And I think you should look into that, because it's not fair for them to obey the law, and then to get fired.
Drew's very concerned about that, and he's looking. One of the concerns we have is redlining. That is something else that's been brought up in that practice, that there are certain areas, certain brokers that are being cut off because of where they're insuring people, and that's unacceptable in this state.
And another thing, come October, there's about 400 or 500 brokers going to lose their jobs if their contracts aren't renewed with their companies. These were the ones that were assigned by the state, that the companies had to take these brokers. Now, they're on the line to lose their jobs, which I think is kind of unfair. And in another vein, I think the state ought to be more friendly to businesses. You know, businesses are over-regulated by the state, it seems like. There's inspections, permits, paperwork galore. And the business is the backbone of the state. They hire people, they pay taxes. Without the taxes, the government cannot exist. It seems like the state is beating the hand that feeds them.
You're absolutely right.
The state has got to be more friendly to the businesses.
No question about it, and that's one of the things that I have said. If nothing else, I want this administration to be very clear that what we're doing is putting a sign out that says, "New Jersey, open for business." Every commissioner that I have appointed has been basically requested to go through every regulation and permit, everything that they have in their department, with a particular emphasis on the regulations, to see what have outlived their usefulness, what ones are just costing us more money, what ones do we really need in order to protect the public health and safety? Because of course, that's number one, and that's our responsibility. But we find that there are a number of rules and regulations that have been written that go far beyond the intent of the legislation, the original legislation that created the need for the regulation, and that in fact, don't do anything to protect the public health and safety, just make it more expensive to do business in this state. We are also moving the Department of Environmental Protection and Energy, and this is going to take time. But we are moving it off of dependence on fines, fees, and penalties for their operating budget, and trying to move them gradually onto the general revenues. Because up until this year, they were 83% funded through fines, fees, and penalties, which meant that their whole incentive was just to increase the fines, increase the fees, increase the penalties. And that did precisely what you said. It made this state a business-unfriendly state. We have a new commissioner of commerce, who's someone who is from South Jersey, from the Camden area. He's a small business person. He is very dedicated to creating jobs. He is very dedicated to the whole program of being business-friendly and being creative in the way we use the authority and the flexibility of state government to encourage business. I have designated the Office of the Secretary of State as Business Ombudsman. And that means it gives them the power, and my secretary of state, the power to cut across lines, departmental lines, to try to help businesses get through the regulatory process, so they don't have to keep bouncing from one department to another. If they find themselves in that situation, they go to her, and she starts to expedite. And we've already had an impact on it. There are a number of different programs we're looking at in, to design legislation to try to give incentives and tax breaks to businesses, so that they can, particularly startup businesses. The bulk of new job creation is going to be in the small business. It's going to be for the next, into the next century, over, probably over 75% of the new job creation is going to come from small business. We need to encourage that. And the whole point behind the income tax cut that I have proposed was not just to cut taxes, because that sounded good, it's to cut the income tax to make this state more competitive relative to our neighboring states and the southern states, so that we can encourage businesses to expand here, to the businesses we have here, to stay here, and to bring new business in. We have got to start creating job growth. And I was very excited to see the number of new job creations for the month of March. It was 21,800 new jobs were created in the month of, between March and April. That is the biggest single-month increase in seven and a half years. And that tells us that, first of all, it's not all because of what we did, no question about it. This is a reaction to the fact that it was a bad winter, that we are beginning to see a change in the overall economy. But it also says that businesses are getting more comfortable with the state of New Jersey, and they're beginning to hear that message, that we are going to be business-friendly, we want them here, we're going to protect our citizens, but we want jobs. Because by getting jobs, by creating more taxpayers, we'll get more money into state revenues, and then we can start to pass that down, to try to relieve the property tax burden, and to be able to supply and support more programs for our population.
Let's try to get on this side. The gentleman with the beard.
I represent a small local government in the county. In the past, the state made certain allowances for small, fiscally responsible local governments. Now, we're all under the same state mandates, and it's very costly. We, I realize there's something that state mandate, state pay, is, there's a bill pending right now. But that is fine, except it's still tax dollars that's going to finance it. And I would like to know if there's any possibility that we might be excused, because we're a small locally, local government with a good fiscal record.
Well, there are two parts to that question, really, that I'd like to address. One is on the state mandate, state pay. As you know, I have been a supporter of it. And what I have said is that if a piece of legislation that mandates a new program doesn't at the same time identify the funding source and start to move the appropriation of those dollars, then not only should it not be a mandate, that municipalities should have the ability to opt out. If it's something that sends a message, "We think this is important," if at the state level, they say, "We think this is important, you should be doing X, Y, or Z to protect people," but they don't provide the money, then the locality should be able to opt out of it. The second part is that we need to change the way we look at all our programs, whether it is state aid to municipalities, or state aid to school districts. We've got to start being more creative and rewarding the ones that do well, and allowing them to keep more of what they save, or allowing them breaks in other ways, from other regulations. Because what we do, and it's not just us in New Jersey, it happens from the federal level on down in every state, you tend to reward, if you look at dollars as being the reward, those who are doing least well. The worse you do, the more money you get. And it tends to also go along with less regulation, in the sense that the state doesn't, we identify you have a problem, so we'll give you more money to solve your problem, but we won't stay with you to try to help you solve the problem. We'll just walk away, assume that more money's going to do it on its own, and come back next year, and you still have a problem, so we'll give you more money. That doesn't make any sense. What we need to do is to direct dollars where they're needed, but the state needs to stay in there with that town, or locality, or school district, and help them work out the problem and solve it. So you don't need to keep putting money in, and figure out a way to reward those towns and counties who are doing a good job, who are efficient, and who are saving, in fact, their taxpayers' dollars. We can't keep hitting them in a negative fashion. So there are two parts to that, and those are both two parts of the reforms that I want to see enacted. Again, they're not something we were able to do overnight. They're going to take time to work out and work with the legislature on addressing, but those are certainly on the top of the, toward the top of the priority list.
The gentleman in the far back, please.
Governor, welcome to Salem County. Name is Jim Gallagher, mayor of Pennsville. And I applaud you on the appointment of Bob Schindt of the DEP, and we're looking forward to, looking to a reduction of punitive action and some help, and we thank you for that. One question, a lot of the municipalities, a big part of their income for their budgets are the grocery receipts taxes. And to us, it's very important. And I'd just like to hear your position on that, Governor. Thank you.
Sure. I think I've gotten a letter from every mayor in the state of New Jersey on the draft, and the grocery receipts and franchise tax, and I know, and I appreciate your concerns. It is part of what I said before, it's part of the total package. We're looking at, we, the treasurer hasn't certified the numbers yet. It could be as much as $67 million this year, $114 million next year. They're big, big dollars we're talking about. And right now, it's got to be part of the total package to see what we can give back to the municipalities, and what the state is going to need to continue just to keep its operating budget without having to slash more programs. And I can't give you an answer, except to say that I know where the legislature is on this, and they are very supportive of ensuring that the entire amount go back to the municipalities. It is one of those taxes, you know, some get more than others, because of whether you, what you have in your town is reflective of who is entitled to more of this grocery receipts and franchise tax. It's a big issue, and it's a major one that we're going to have to sit down and negotiate with the legislature, once the treasurer has certified the number. And we've looked at the total number of requests that have come in for dollars to be put back in the budget. It's a function of how much money do we have, and where is it best spent?
The woman in the second row here, please.
My name is Rose Smith, and I'm a homeowner in Pennsville. And I have a question for you, Governor Whitman. The Homestead rebate program was designed originally to give tax relief to homeowners. Over the years, I see that as being kind of turned into a giveaway for people who really are not homeowners, and are living in subsidized housing. Do you see any hope that that will be revamped, and something done to change that?
Well, we are, right now, as part of this budget, we are going to be enforcing the court decision that says, if you live in subsidized or property, property that does not pay property tax, you do not get the Homestead rebate. The previous administration was giving that to people who never saw the homes, who never saw the property tax in their bill. That is clearly not the intention of the Homestead rebate, and we are not going to be funding those people. So that, that's already part of this budget. We have anticipated that. We're taking a whole look, the Homestead rebate is fully funded beyond that, to those who qualify and deserve it. But we're taking a whole look, if doesn't make more sense to give people a check-off on their taxes upfront, so they don't pay it into the state and have us cross us and give it back? And that's part of a total look we're taking at the taxing structure of the state.
I'm going to try a student here, okay? We brought a lot of students in, we'd like to ask them, have them ask a couple of questions.
My name is Robert Messmer. I'm a computer-assisted design and drafting student, and president of Vocational Industrial Clubs of America at the Salem County Vocational Technical School. I would like to know what your emphasis, what your view are on educational education, and what will be the emphasis of vocational education within your administration?
Well, first of all, congratulations. You've taken on a lot of responsibility. One of the things that we're doing, and it's really part and parcel of what I have recommended on higher education as part of my thinking and direction toward eliminating the Board of Higher Education and the Chancellor of Higher Education, is to increase the flexibility of our institutions of higher learning to enable them to do more, starting really with primary and secondary schools. And a large part of that is with vocational education. We need to have much more flexibility to allow the VocEd schools to access the business community, to start to work. We need to start earlier, and it's a proposal that I've made, and the Commissioner of Education is looking at that. We need to start earlier to start allowing students to direct themselves, you know by the time you're in 11th grade, you're juniors, seniors, whether or not you're going to be going on to an AB type of degree or a BA, or whether you want vocational training, whether that's more in line with your interests. We need to start allowing that to occur earlier on so you can start earning credits toward a vocational degree in the 11th and 12th grades while still continuing your general studies so that of course you have a well-rounded education that gives you the ability to take advantage of your training. But we also need to change an attitude that's all too prevalent in this state, which is that somehow you should try to get a BA or an AB and not consider vocational training. And that's just wrong. Vocational training and vocational education is important. It's good, honest education. It gives you the skills that you need to get real jobs in the real world. It's important, and we need to support it. And what we're looking to do is to try to see a much more integrated system of education where we start planning from kindergarten to graduate school, and vocational education is an integral part of that. But we have to give the institutions the ability to, to change with the times. I mean, the world is changing so rapidly. The skills that are needed for jobs for the 21st century are vastly different than what we've been training people for in the early part of the 20th century and even the mid-part of the 20th century. So vocational education's going to get a lot of attention. I want to see, and we're working on some programs that will enhance the ability of the private sector to get involved with vocational training, both to work with the teachers as well as with the students to show them what are the kinds of skills that are needed for the jobs of the 21st century so that we're really training for the future and not just continuing things that we've done in the past because that's the way we've always done them. I'm looking on for greater flexibility and more attention given to vocational education over the next four years.
My name is Bill Jenkins. I live in a little town of Elsonboro. And thank you for coming and listening to these concerns. One of them was the QEA formula that's still in place, even though you dismantled, the government's dismantled some of it. That's still there. And it's causing a lot of towns to be declared rich communities because they have a millionaire living there. It's a goofy thing. The author of that even admitted it's flawed. I quote him. The other thing is the nuclear impact zone that we live in this area, some of Salem is in it, Pennsville, our whole town of Elsonboro is in it. We receive no revenue from the nuclear plant, none. LAC, Lower Aloe Creek, gets the majority of it. That's fine, they should. But the rest, 15 to 30 million dollars, and it varies, is put in a general fund. It goes over our head like a ballistic missile. We get nothing, zero zip. Jack Collins and Senator Zane have both introduced bills. They're stuck in the muck in the Senate somewhere. So hopefully, when it comes before you, Governor, you will take a good look at it and realize that certainly North Jersey doesn't have any chance of getting impacted by the nuclear plants. We're within the 10-mile radius. We know. We just went through some of it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And I certainly will look very closely at that, at that legislation when it gets, when it gets out of the muck and gets all the way to my desk, which may be muckier, I don't know. Some people might say that. Let me just talk a little bit about the Quality Education Act because I think it's very important. You've touched on what is perhaps one of the biggest areas of, the biggest parts of the budget and biggest areas of concern in the state, and that is how we fund education. Today, the Supreme Court is hearing the second phase of the Marilyn Morehauser case that is directed toward funding and funding formulas for education. We've clearly got to address it. We cannot, the court spoke earlier, they were very definitive, you cannot continue to rely on the property tax as the sole or primary way of funding education. That's inherently unequal. The problem, and I know very well what you're talking about, on the problem of the Formula for Equality Education Act, is you see it all over. Wherever you have communities, when you try to paint this broad brush and identify what's wealthy and what isn't, you mess it up because you will take, you have one or two people skew the whole balance, and all of a sudden, you're declared a wealthy district or a wealthy community, and you're not. The vast majority of people are not, and they can't afford what they have to pay or what they're, because they're not getting, what they're not getting in state aid because of the designation. We are looking at addressing the entire area of state aid to education. Right after the election, I appointed a commission that I asked to make recommendations to me on how to change the formula. They have come back and made recommendations, which I have passed on to the Treasury and the Commissioner of Education and asked them, along with the Head of Policy and Planning, to make some recommendations that we would then submit in bill form to the legislature to address the issue. Governor Florio had also appointed a panel to address it. They have come back with their recommendations, which are essentially increased taxes. The message that we're trying to get to the court, and I hope they will hear us, and that we want to get out to the public in general, is that money alone is not going to make the difference. Yes, there are districts that need dollars, and there's no question, but we need to support them, and particularly our special needs districts, the 30 special needs districts. But without having a set of core curriculum standards and without having the ability to test and to hold people to standards, to set them and to have some accountability, we are never going to change education for our young people. We're never going to get it to where it needs to be. And the Commissioner of Education and I have been talking about this nonstop. He is working now on getting out a core curriculum standards that are going to apply statewide, which will give our kids the, the ability to, and the way I'd like to judge the success of our educational system is whether or not each young person who graduates from high school has the ability upon graduation to either go out and get a self-supporting job or go on to higher education and be mainstreamed. One of the fastest-growing parts of the budgets of our community colleges particularly, but of all our institutions of higher education have been remedial dollars necessary to bring our high school graduates up to the ability to do entry-level college work, and that's just unacceptable. It means we're paying for it twice. It can't continue, and that is something we're addressing. Obviously, we have to wait. One of the things that's going to have a big impact is what the court decides. But what we're saying to them is we're making a good faith effort, we did it in this budget, to ensure that we continue our support for the special needs districts. We are in, we are trying to develop an alternate form of funding, and we're looking at that now, and that is in the draft stages, as you were, as it were. And we, but we've got to understand, and we want the court to understand, that dollars alone isn't going to, aren't going to make the difference. And we have to recognize that as part of our overall approach to improving education in this state.
The gentleman in the far back who's been patient, has been patiently waiting.
Thank you. My name is Terry Crowley. I'm the Superintendent of Schools of Kingsway Regional School District in Gloucester County and a resident of Piles Grove Township in Salem County. I appreciate the comments you made earlier about school funding and teacher pension. I'm not going to ask you about that. What I am going to ask you about is the overregulation, particularly of school districts in our particular case, by the state, by the DEPE. We've had a quick story we put on in addition that necessitated two additional toilets. It took us one year to get the permit from DEPE to connect those two toilets. We're also regulated by the Gloucester County Soil Conservation District, by the local officials. All of this, by the way, is costing a substantial amount of money for permits, fees, attorney's fees, and other matters. Senator Zane is our solicitor, that was meant for him.
I heard him laugh.
Yeah, thank you. But what's happening and what we're afraid of with dwindling state aid, with steady funding, that the available dollars that are raised through the tax base or from the state are being spent to further pay the DEPE and the various regulation agencies that we're under the influence of. Appreciate your comments on that.
You're absolutely right, and that's part of what I said at the, at the opening, which I wish I could have done a magic wand and solved it all, because the biggest responsibility I believe the state has to the municipalities and the school districts, while we did everything we could to hold funding level this year and put 100 million dollars more into municipal aid and tried to, and kept school districts essentially level in funding, that's not good enough when we continue to have those mandates. And the other part of the equation, and the most important thing that we have to do from the state's perspective, is to start to reduce the bureaucracy, start to reduce the paperwork. There's no reason why you have to go through things three or four times from three or four different departments in state government to get the same thing, to do permits, when you have to go through the Department of Commerce and you have to go through the DEPE in two different parts or three different parts of the DEPE and the, and the board, and education, you know, it just, it goes on and on. It's complicated, it's difficult, it's going to take time, but that's where our essential emphasis is now as we look at regulation and we look at reform. It's how do we streamline? How do we take a look? One of the things that we've got to look at, and it's difficult because everyone likes, and we have a very good record in this state of being sensitive and protecting the environment and protecting our public, and we, we don't want to back off that. Anything that truly protects the public health and safety is the responsibility of government to enforce. But we very often go beyond what are federal regulations without stopping to really assess, is this next step that we're requiring everybody to go through really going to have an impact on the public health and safety? If it is, fine, then we'll do it and we'll keep our people safe because we don't back away from that. But very often, we find that it doesn't, that it is not going to significantly change the level of clean air, let's say, and that's a big one that we're dealing with right now, or the level of, of clean water, the public health and safety. And we need to start assessing each time we look at a regulation, we need to start assessing what the fiscal impact is as well as the health or safety impact, and then make an intelligent decision. Is it worth it? And if not, then we ought not to do it because we've got to recognize, we've got to continue to function in this state. And very often, we just make it more expensive and we discourage people from locating here. And as far as the municipalities and the school districts are concerned, we have these, that's why I want to go to site-based management for schools. That is something that Leo Claggholz and I, the Commissioner of Education, have been working towards because each school district draws from a different type of population, and they have different ways that they want to meet their needs. What we should do at the state level is set out the core curriculum standards, say, these are the kinds of skills we want our kids to have learned at these various levels, fourth, seventh, 11th grades, which would be the, the standards of where they'd be tested, and then let you deliver that education as best you see fit. If you want a longer school day or a longer school year, that should be up to you. It's not, the state shouldn't care how you deliver the education. All the state should care about is that it's getting delivered. The same thing is true with everything else that we do. We should set the standards for public health and safety. What are the acceptable emission levels from a plant? But we shouldn't tell you how to do it, that you don't have to have this particular type of electrostatic precipitator or scrubber. Why do we care? As long as we say we're going to monitor those stacks and make sure they're clean. You do it in a way that keeps you competitive and a way that allows you to keep your tax rate stable. And that's again, the whole thrust of what we're trying to do with this administration. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's something that we're going to be working diligently to achieve.
The gentleman here, please. Please, please, for the microphone. Thank you. Sir?
Governor Whitman, my name is Jack Manning. I'm chairman of Farmers Mutual Insurance Company here in Salem. We've been here doing business for about 150 years now. During the whole 150 years, we never sold one auto insurance policy. But after the JUA disappeared and assessments were made, we were assessed an amount that represents almost 50 percent of our net worth or policyholder surplus, as we call it in a mutual company. In the interests of the equity that you referred to earlier, I'd like you to consider the fact that we may not be able to survive as an ongoing insurance company, providing basically homeowners' coverage to local residents and still be able to meet the obligations of this assessment. The legislators who are seated behind you are aware of our problems. I'd like you to be aware of them as well. Thank you.
And Drew Karpinski, the Insurance Commissioner, is very aware of those. And the pup companies that developed when we started with the insurance reform and requiring people to write auto insurance, they have a real problem, and we may see the demise of more companies because of some of the requirements on auto insurance writing in this state. And it is a huge problem. It is something of which he is very aware, and it's part of the overall solution that we're going to have to look to. Just solving this immediate MTF deficit is not going to solve the overall auto insurance problem. That's going to give us a little breathing space, but we've got to continue to address the rest of these issues that are going to come down on us in the very near future. And he is aware of that, and he is working very diligently to try to come up with some creative solutions.
There was a student in the back, second row from the back, please.
This is Whitman. In our school, we have problems where they want to cut our industrial art classes because the state has not given them enough money to support the classes and the rest of us. So what are you going to do about that?
Well, you know, one of the things that, that I have to tell you, and I don't know the particulars of, of your school and, and what's happened, but I hear it again and again and again, when we've kept state aid, we've kept it level and for the vast majority of the districts so that there isn't a cut, but you're just not seeing the increases that people sort of came to expect from the state as if the money was kind of printed out of whole air. What we have seen again and again in districts, and again, I can't speak to yours because I don't know the particulars, is when there is a need to cut, they never cut at the administrative level. There is never the effort to, there's never the effort to look at where can we share services with a nearby district. I mean, whether it is food services, where, where can we privatize? There are a number of options that can be brought into play that fall short of having to cut kids' programs. And we should be considering, and the whole focus has got to be delivering education to young people. That's what it's about. I had one district up in Essex County, a person come to me who say, our school budget just went down to defeat. But we're not coming back to the state to ask you for more money or to ask you to reverse that, which as you know, has been the sort of pattern in the past, although the current Commissioner has, and he and I agree on this, has indicated that's no longer going to be an automatic, that we're going to restore it. But what they said is, we've decided to privatize all the back office operations, we're going to meet our budget, we're going to be fine. I mean, I want to say, you could have done that years ago and saved taxpayers' dollars. That's the kind of creativity that can be brought to bear that doesn't mean you have to go to the classroom and start cutting the need, the necessary and good education to young people. Unfortunately, it's much easier to say that's what you're going to do. It's much harder to get at the bureaucracy. It's much harder to get people to agree that, okay, we're going to look at privatizing some services, or we're going to look at sharing services where we can enter a cooperative purchasing agreement with a nearby locality or nearby school district and thereby save money. It doesn't mean you give up control of education, of your local education, but it does mean that you save yourself some money. And those are decisions that need to be made. It doesn't always have to come down to, and as I say, I can't speak to your district because I don't know the particulars, whether they've done all they can in weeding out unnecessary levels of bureaucracy, controlling that level and looking at where they can privatize. But I can tell you, I've seen it over and over again, where the knee-jerk reaction is we're going to cut a program that's really going to get people upset so that they're going to come back and say, well, you can't hold the line here, we have to increase the budget. And that defeats the whole purpose. And what we're saying is, no. The time has come. We've got to really make sure that you're doing everything you can to deliver these services in an efficient way and not keep coming at the students and the teachers and cutting them out when you could reach up to those upper levels and do some other things.
The woman in the fourth row, please.
Hello, my name is Joanna Petriantonio, and I'm a junior at Woodston High School. Recently, I've been looking into colleges to attend when I graduate. And with all the talk of getting rid of the State Department of Education, that will allow colleges to raise tuitions however high they want to. Now, I know you may not think that that's the concern of the state, but don't you feel that's unfair for students, especially who can't already afford the already high tuitions?
Sure. First of all, it's Department of Higher Ed we're, we're eliminating, not the Department of Education. But let me just say something to you. What we're doing in, in removing that Department of Higher Education is eliminating a layer of bureaucracy that doesn't need to be there. It's allowing decisions to be made at the levels where they really should be made on the college campuses, by the trustees and the administration. These colleges are competitive. They want students. I served as a trustee of a I served as a trustee of a community college. The last thing we wanted to do was raise tuitions. It doesn't mean that there's going to be, all of a sudden, a huge spike in tuition increases. You have to understand that over the last years, when we've had the Board of Higher Education, every year, and the chancellor has supported all the past budgets, every year, funding for higher education went down and tuitions went up. This has been a pattern that has continued for at least 15 years. We've seen this happening. And that isn't fair either. So what we're proposing to do is say, look, the system right now isn't working to drive down the cost of tuitions. It isn't working to increase the level of state support for colleges. Let's try something different now. The colleges and universities will go to the president's council, which is going to be made up the presidents of all the institutions, and they will, they will then speak directly to the treasurer about budget needs. The community colleges, for the first time, will have an official seat at the table. Two of them will be part of that executive council of the college presidents, of the president's council, that is going to be making the recommendations. Now, the individual colleges, yes, they can go back and raise their tuitions if they so choose. But as far as the support they get from the state, they will have been able to make the argument, will be able to give them the support they need to hold down tuition. And I can assure you that the one thing that they want to do, because they're going to be competitive, and if they don't have students, they can't exist, is to hold down those tuitions. What we're doing is giving them the flexibility to really start to respond and to be more creative. I was just at Burlington County Community College last weekend for graduation. They have entered into an agreement with New Jersey Institute of Technology, totally outside of anything the Board of Higher Education did or allowed them to do it. In fact, it took them extra time to do it because they had to try to figure out how to get around that layer of bureaucracy. And what that's doing is it, they start, young people who want to get an engineering degree start getting credits at Burlington County Community College, and it will reduce their overall tuition, because they spend two years at BCC and pay that tuition before they then go to NJIT, and they only have to spend two years at NJIT instead of the normal course, and so they save tuition dollars. That's the kind of creativity that will actually, I think, result in lower tuitions over time, or at least a real stabilization of tuitions. So you don't see them continually going up at 5% and better every year, because it will give them the creativity and the flexibility to get out from under a bureaucracy and respond to new needs and be more creative. But I can, I know because I've been there, the last thing you want to do as a trustee of a college at any level is raise tuitions. That is counterproductive to what you want, which is what, more students. But that aside, the presumption that everything was perfect when you had a Board of Higher Education and chancellor is just proved a lie if you look at the facts, which is that, in fact, the state support of higher education's gone down, particularly the last six years, and college tuitions have gone up. So I'm not saying that we can't make it any worse. You can always make things worse, and we have to watch things very carefully. But the college presidents, the college, the boards of trustees are responsible people. They are people who care. They want thriving institutions. They're going to try to hold down tuition costs.
One last quick question. The gentleman with the mustache?
Governor Whitman, I'm an open shop contractor, building contractor, and I cannot extend my appreciation and gratitude for your canceling Executive Order Number 99, which would have made it mandatory for open shop contractors like myself to have a union agreement. Thank you ever so much, and God bless you.[1621.63][1621.63][applause]
Thank you very much. We just have to do one thing, because as a parent, parents are put on earth to embarrass their children, and I wouldn't want Rebecca to think that her father was any less. And he said you had a question for me, Rebecca Collins, so...[1643.01][1643.01][laughter]
Rebecca's hiding. I'm going to be painting over here, please.
I am just fulfilling my, my role as a parent to, enhance your father's role as a parent.[1652.51][1652.51][laughter] You had a question?[1657.45][1657.45][laughter] I'm sorry, Rebecca. I promised him I'd do it to you. You don't have to. He told me what it was. He wanted you to ask me what the relationship, what the role of the leadership of the assembly was and...
The role of the majority leader.
Particularly the majority leader? I can't imagine why he wanted that question asked.[1678.33][1678.33][laughter] Let's just say he's absolutely integral to getting any of my policies done. I'm relying heavily on your father, and I'm relying heavily on the leadership and the members on both sides to see that we can start to make New Jersey the great state that it truly is. And as I tell people over and over again, I have the best job in the nation, bar none, because this is such a great state and has such wonderful diversity and such great opportunity to make things better. And I want to thank you all again for taking time from your day to be here. Thank you very much. And don't stop. Send me the letters, please. Thank you.[1711.45][1711.45][applause]
Thank you very much.